Next, 2022 regular board meeting. Clerk Seiguris, can you please call us to order?
For a roll call, I will start with Trustee Berninski.
Good evening, everyone.
Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Ganguly.
Good evening.
Supervisor Graham Hudak.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that I, Clerk Seiguris, am in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
And unfortunately for all of us and those at home, Trustee Snyderman appears to be absent.
Thank you. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please? Adding items G10, consider closing Public Safety Records Bureau to the public forum for relocation purposes. G11, consider request to approve conceptual designs for the Village Arts Factory, Village Square, concept and parking improvements in Sherio Village. And G12, consider a request to approve conceptual designs for the factory park Ridge Road Park and the fire station number two park.
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seiguris, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for April 12th, 2022?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seiguris, supported by Trustee Berninski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes, approval. So the next item is going to be public comments on agenda items only, and we're doing it this way. We have it set up this way for a couple of months now so we can get input to what is on the agenda. So while we're considering our votes, we will take into consideration what the public has said. There is another public comment at the end of the agenda also. Are there any public comments on the agenda items? Nope, I don't see any in the room. Let me look at the attendees online. Any comments on the agenda items? I don't see any hands. Public comment on agenda items, public comment on agenda items. Okay. So the next item is payment of the bills.
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Clerk Seiguris. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, motion passes for payment of the bills. The next item we have is a recognition for fire department promotion for our training chief. So Sean Skelly is being recognized tonight for his recent promotion to the rank of Training Chief in the Canton Fire Department. Sean has served the community as a firefighter paramedic since 2007. In his new administrative command position, he will be responsible for designing, implementing, and delivering all required training to do department personnel as related to fire operations, suppression activities, specialized technical rescues, and emergency medical service. As Training Chief, he is also responsible for overseeing the department's probationary firefighter program and coordinating training with the department's emergency dispatch call takers. This position may also be utilized within the command structure in emergency situations as requested by the Deputy Chief or Director of Fire Services. So Sean, would you like to go to the podium? I don't know, Chief Chad, if you want to say anything? I'm sorry. Chief Chad, you can come up too, but it is Chris that wants to present. He's kicking me under the table.
All right. First of all, I just wanted to thank the board for allowing us to create this position. It's been needed in the fire department for several years. Through the testing process, we had a rigorous testing process, and Sean came out as number one, and I just want to congratulate him. I'm looking forward to all the things that he's going to implement in the fire service over there, keeping us on track for all the laws and training requirements that are through my OSHA, through State Fire Marshal's Office, everything involved with that. He comes from a large, a big background of USAR. He's worked on the USAR team for Western Wayne for several years. He's also was part of Task Force One for the state deployments, been deployed down to Hurricanes as well. So he really knows his stuff, and we're very honored to have him in that position. Plus, it's going to take a big workload off of Jamie and I, so we appreciate that. So, but anyways, congratulations.
Well, thank you. Can't go anywhere else.
I don't have a lot to say. I'm just, I'm thankful for this opportunity. My family's thankful. I look forward to everything that we can accomplish in this position, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
The next item is hitting on the general calendar. General calendar. The first item is consider two contracts, one to Bidagir Contractors Incorporated and one to Fishbeck for the 2022 Water Main Capital Improvement Project and approve a budget amendment.
Madam Supervisor, my PDF crashed. My apologies. I move to approve the attached budget amendment and award contracts as presented in the amount totaling $2,626,932 to Bridget Air Contractors Incorporated and $83,250 to Fishbeck for the 2022 Water Main Capital Improvement Project and authorize the township supervisor or clerk to sign the contracts on behalf of the Charter Township of Canton.
Thank you. Motion made by Clerk Seiguris, supported by Treasurer Slavens. I'm just looking to see if we have somebody from MSD online also. Oh, David is here. I'll promote him to panelist. Yeah, I think Jade is.
I'm here, Emery.
Oh, you're, okay, see, there you go. Okay, great. So let me just read this. Thank you. The 2018 Water Master Plan identified a number of projects necessary to meet the existing and future water demands of our customers. In addition to the master plan, staff is constantly evaluating locations that are experiencing multiple main breaks in a relatively small area. As part of the annual water rate setting process, the determination was made to increase the capital expenditures to complete this work. The increase being presented was taken into consideration when the Board of Trustees approved the current water rates on May 4th, 2021 that resulted in an overall rate decrease. Staff is recommending award of contract to Bidagir Contractors for the 2022 Water Main Capital Improvement Project with the following breakdown. Contract amount $2,284,332, contingency amount 15%, $342,600, total amount $2,626,932. This award of contract is a continuation of contract for water main replacement of existing, underperforming, unreliable water main. Staff is also recommending continuation of contract for construction management and inspection services to Fishbeck with the following breakdowns. Contract amount $72,392, contingency amount 15%, $10,858, total amount is $83,250. Fishbeck served in the same position for the 2019, 2020, and 21 Water Main CIP. Jade, did you want to add anything to that?
No, it was pretty self-explanatory. This goes back to 2018's Water Main Capital Improvement Plan, and this was taken into consideration in the budget when we did the rates in 2021. So although we've already passed the rates for 2022, but this, this has already been taken into consideration last year.
Okay, any board comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is consider a site plan for fast food restaurant Chipotle.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board approve the following resolution, a site, a site plan for Chipotle. Whereas project sponsor has requested site plan approval for a Chipotle fast food restaurant with a drive-through on the subject tax parcel at 45541 Michigan Avenue located on the south side of Michigan Avenue between Belleville Road and Beck Road. And whereas Planning Commission reviewed site plan or application and applicable criteria, voted eight to zero to recommend approval with conditions. As the request meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the site plan for a Chipotle fast food restaurant with a drive-through on subject tax parcel at 45541 Michigan Avenue, subject to the conditions of PDD approval and subject to all applicable state, county, and township requirements.
Motion made by Clerk Seiguris, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The applicant proposes to split 1.11 acres from the Walmart parcel with the intent of constructing a Chipotle fast food restaurant with a pickup window and a 2,432 square foot building. Specifically, the site is located on the south side of Michigan Avenue, west of Belleville Road. The current site consists of a parking lot and is part of the Walmart PDD, which was originally approved in 2007 for the current store. At its meeting on January 25th, 2022, the Canton Township Board of Trustees approved an amendment to the PDD to allow for the proposed Chipotle restaurant. The site is zone C3 and fast food restaurants are special land uses in the C3 district. The approved PDD amendment allows for the proposed use. At its meeting on April 4th, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the site plan, subject to conditions. The site plan is approved, the next step will be for the applicant to submit plans to the Engineering Services Division and Building and Inspection Services Division for review prior to construction. Jade, do you have anything to add? Jade or Patrick?
Patrick, I think, is there in person.
Patrick, he's shaking his head. Okay. Any questions or comments? Kate?
Just wanted to make sure it's clear that the, in the, in the resolution, it said a drive-through window, but it's actually a pickup window. So just wanted to clarify that.
Other questions or comments? All those in favor?
I, I do, just briefly, I'm sorry. I was just, the comment about the drive-through versus pickup kind of threw me off a little bit. And it's not, more importantly, you know, this little section right here is, it's an interesting spot on Michigan Avenue because the Michigan left, the light turn right there, it's like the only place in Canton Township where the green light north-south there for individuals who are coming off of the westbound Michigan and people who are coming out of that, that Walmart site plan right there are, you got people turning left and people turning right, and a lot of times traffic crosses right there. And I know that MDOT has sworn that they will never do something like that ever again. I would just, as we, as we look at site design for Ford Road, I, with the, with the Boulevard concept, and I know it's topical now, I would just love to make sure as we review their project, their Boulevard proposal, we ensure that this, we don't get something like that at that location. Because I do know Public Safety is aware of this spot, and I know that MDOT is aware of this spot as well on Michigan Avenue. It's not conditional for my support for the project because it's not Chipotle's fault that MDOT built a light right there, but.
I think they can control either side too. I don't know, Patrick, if you want to comment to that, on that?
Hi, thank you. There aren't any MDOT plans in that area I'm aware of for any kind of improvements or changes. One of the items that we did look at was on the northwest corner of the site originally, this was before the board had approved the plan development plan, there was an outlet onto the main drive as like an exit only, and because of some access management concerns, they removed that drive. So they're only able to exit the site through, off of that drive farther south. But in terms of any MDOT projects in the area, I'm not aware of any changes in right-of-way.
Are you aware that they, that there was an issue with the light timing in terms of having both green coming both directions? Is that what you're talking about, Michael? So you're coming off of the westbound and coming out of the Walmart parking lot at the same time?
I don't know that it's a timing issue. I just think it's how we design traffic lights. It's, 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 it really just has to do with the, the fact that you can go straight or go left at that location. I don't know that there's a solution for it. That's part of the reason why I was just recommending that with regard to Ford Road, we keep an eye on it.
Okay, yeah, we can put that comment in for them. All right, anything else, Patrick?
Nothing else unless there are any questions.
Other questions?
Quick comment. This is, this is pickup only. It's not going to be a sit-down restaurant. Is that correct, or?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. The fast food restaurants and drive-throughs, they're, they're pretty synonymous, but for this one especially, in the plan development agreement, it was required that, they have fewer than the required number of stacking spaces, and the reason is that's a pickup window only, and that was written into their PD agreement. So they're not, it's only for pre-orders where they go and they pick up the order, so there's, there's no menu board, or people can't pull up an order from the board. It's basically order ahead and, and pick up the food there at the window. So it would function much like a drive-through, but because there's not like an order menu, it won't have the traffic and delays that a typical drive-through might have.
Any other questions?
Just based on Diane's question, now I have to clarify. Can you go inside and eat?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So it's just like many other Chipotles, that if you've been to one, you can go inside and eat. The difference is with this one is if you order ahead or you have a DoorDash order or something like that, whoever is picking that up can go through that driveway, drive-through lane to pick up.
Right, so the window is pickup only, but the restaurant is eat-in and pickup?
Yep, absolutely.
Like the one on Ford Road, that you can eat in there.
Yep, definitely.
All right, any other questions? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item, G3, consider special land use for automobile wash establishment, Mr. Carwash.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution for the approval of the special land use for Master, Mr. Carwash. Whereas project sponsor has requested special land use approval of an auto wash establishment on the subject tax parcel located on the east side of Hagerty Road, south of Ford Road. And whereas Planning Commission reviewed the request and applicable criteria and voted eight to zero to recommend approval with conditions as the request meets the criteria of special land use approval in sections 27.03 subsection C of the zoning ordinance, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the special land use for an automobile wash establishment used on the subject tax parcel. Sorry, it was like feedback or something, just got in my ear for a second. Now I don't know where I'm at. As illustrated on the special land use plan, as the request meets the special land use criteria of the Canton Township zoning ordinance pursuant to the information and plans provided subject to specific design criteria noted by staff to be addressed and corrected at the time of site plan review, including removal of the excess easement between the subject site and the parcel to the east and subject to all state, county, and township requirements.
Motion made by Clerk Seiguris, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Thank you. The project sponsor proposes to construct an automobile wash establishment, AKA Carwash, on a single parcel located on the east side of Hagerty Road, south of Ford Road, at 2100 Hagerty Road. The site was recently rezoned to C3, regional commercial, and automobile wash establishments are special land uses in the C3 zoning district, subject to section 6.02D of the zoning ordinance. The site currently contains a vacant building which is proposed to be demolished. The proposed business, Mr. Carwash, has other locations in Michigan, most of which are in the Grand Rapids area. At its meeting on April 4th, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the special land use, subject to conditions. If the special land use is approved, the next step will be for the applicant to submit a site plan application, which will be reviewed by the Planning Commission and Township Board. The special land use plans include more details than are typically retired on a special land use plan, so many of the staff comments are regarding elements that will be addressed at the time of site plan review. Jade or Patrick, actually, do you want to add anything?
Hi, thank you. This proposed Carwash will result in the removal of that vacant restaurant over on the east side of Hagerty Road. So we're going to see the removal of a blighted building replaced with more productive land use. This will also result in the removal of the curb cut from Hagerty Road, so the site will get the access from an existing curb cut to the north of the site, and the driveway south of the site will be removed. So there'll, there'll be one fewer, one less curb cut on the Hagerty Road. So access management will be a little bit more streamlined.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? Michael?
The job on removing the curb cut and getting the blighted property, you know, that's a good use of planning. Well done.
Yeah, applicants did a really nice job trying to design around all that.
Dana, did you have something?
So there's just one, one way of entering on the north side, right? That's.
Yes, there's a, an access road to the north, and that access road goes from Hagerty Road to the west, and it also goes as far to the north as Ford Road. And it accesses the gas station, the Bowery, the La Quinta Hotel. So there's a few businesses.
Yeah, I, I know what you're talking about. So will there be any confusion in the sign placement? Because I read the, the minutes from the Planning Commission, and there was a little bit of concern about the sign placement. Will that be discussed in the site plan time, like where the sign will be placed?
Definitely. That will be discussed at the, the site, the time of site plan review. They will probably want to have their sign as close to the driveway as possible just to minimize any kind of confusion. There may also be an opportunity for a multi-tenant sign that we've suggested that the owners and other owners maybe try to cooperate on, so that may or may not happen. We'll see during site plan review if we get something like that. But if it's a single-tenant sign, that will definitely be taken care of during the site plan review stage.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G4, consider special land use for automobile wash establishment, Zippy Auto Wash.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution, approval of the special land use for Zippy Auto Wash. Whereas project sponsor has requested special land use approval for an auto wash establishment used on the subject tax parcels located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Michigan Ave and Beck Road. And whereas Planning Commission reviewed the request and applicable criteria and voted eight to zero to recommend approval with conditions as the request meets the criteria of special land use approval in section 27.03 subsection C of the zoning ordinance, our favorite section, now therefore being resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the special land use for an automobile wash establishment used on the subject tax parcel numbers as illustrated on the special land use plan, as the request meets the special land use criteria of the Canton Township zoning ordinance pursuant to the information and plans provided subject to specific design criteria noted by staff to be addressed and corrected at the time of the site plan review and subject to all state, county, and township requirements.
Thank you. Motion made by Clerk Seiguris, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The project sponsor proposes to construct a Carwash establishment on two parcels at the southwest corner in the intersection of Michigan Ave and Beck Road. The site was recently rezoned to C3, regional commercial and automobile wash establishments are special land uses in the C3 zoning district, subject to section 6.02D of the zoning ordinance. The site currently contains a vacant building which is proposed to be demolished. The proposed business, Zippy Auto Wash, has four other locations in the Ann Arbor-Saline area. At its meeting on April 4th, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the special land use, subject to conditions. If the special land use is approved, the next steps will be for the applicant to submit a site plan, which will be reviewed by the Planning Commission and Township Board. The special land use plans include more details than are typically required on a special land use plan, so many of the staff comments are regarding elements that will be addressed at the time of site plan review. Patrick, do you have anything to add on that one?
Thank you. Last one, I promise. This is another Carwash. This is at the southwest corner of Michigan and Beck, and this proposed Carwash will also result in the demolition of a vacant building, in this case, an old industrial building that is vacant. So that will result in the removal of that building and a more productive land use there. The applicants are proposing only the access off of Michigan Avenue and not off of Beck Road, so all the access will go exclusively off of Michigan Avenue. The comments back from MDOT is that the access will work. They just have to repaint the east, the eastbound lane, the farthest to the south. The concrete is there, they just have to re-stripe it so that that's a right-turn lane into the site. So other than some painting there, MDOT didn't have any other comments in terms of any improvements for Michigan Avenue. So with that, I'll take any other questions.
Any board questions or comments? Nope. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Item G6, consider approving the purchase of one.
Five?
Sorry, G5, I'm skipping, I'm checking too fast. Consider approving the purchase of three Braun Rescue Ambulances and an associated adjustment to the 2023 fire budget.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of three Braun Chief XL Rescue Ambulances from Kodiak Emergency Vehicles in the amount of $855,318, and the, also additionally to approve the attached budget adjustment to the 2023 fire budget.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seiguris, supported by Trustee Berninski. The fire department is requesting approval to purchase three Braun Chief XL Rescue Ambulances from Kodiak Emergency Vehicles, authorized distributor of Braun vehicles in Michigan. The department has selected Braun, utilizing a low bid price secured by HGAC, which is Houston-Galveston Area Council, in the amount of $855,318 for three ambulances after all credits and discounts. Chief Stockline, do you want to add anything?
I know it's a little crazy to be asking for more ambulances when we still haven't received the ones that we ordered last year, but that's the market today, and so we're really trying to plan ahead on this. I know the supervisor helped, or attended the expo with me and spoke directly to the vendors while we were up there, and although we said, you know, 20, 20, 20, 19 to 20 months on this, they're talking about maybe even possibly three years now. They still don't even have build dates on the ones that we ordered last year, so we're just trying to get ahead of the game. And also, we know that with putting this order in, we're going to save at least 5% every single year from waiting for these next couple of years to get these ordered. So it only makes sense to get them ordered at this point and try and keep these rigs on the road so we can serve the citizens.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is G6, consider approving the purchase of one Sutfin fire engine and an associated adjustment to the 2023 fire budget.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of one Sutfin heavy-duty custom S8 pumper engine from Apollo Fire Equipment in the amount of $275,000, sorry, give me one moment. In the amount of $725,451, and to approve the attached budget amendment to the 2022 fire budget.
All right. Motion made by Clerk Seiguris, supported by Trustee Berninski. The fire department is requesting approval to purchase one Sutfin heavy-duty custom S8 pumper engine from Apollo Fire Equipment, the authorized distributor of Sutfin Apparatus in Michigan. The department has selected Sutfin, utilizing a low bid secured by HGAC, Houston-Galveston Area Council, in the amount of $725,451, full prepaid discount for the apparatus. Chief Stockline, do you have anything to add on this one?
I would just say that if we can get it for 200, like the clerk said, then let's do it.
I think this is a three-year, this is a backup also of three years, isn't it?
This is, this is actually, you can see on here that we put down that it would be about 24 or 20 months, and you can see on the quote there that they're actually now have changed that to anywhere from 24 to 26 months. So we're actually just over two years on this. And we do have two of these ordered as well. And we do have two of these ordered as well from last year. So we still don't have a build date on this one, but we were expecting those to come in this year. And that should set us up pretty well into the future for the next five to seven years, depending on when we receive them.
Any questions or comments? Tanya?
So is this for, is this expanding things, expanding the number of fire engines and the ambulances? Or is this replacing them? I was just curious about that.
So this, this is a replacement. So like the ambulances, those were 2013s and 2016s that we're replacing. And we did have one in our strategic plan to add in if we do an additional station. But at this point, we haven't done any, any work on those new rigs yet. So we're kind of just still waiting to see what, what else happens.
And the fire engine is also a replacement?
There are also replacements as well. Like I said, we're pulling this a little bit further forward, knowing that we're going to see that in two years.
Yeah, I understand there's a, there's a three-year waiting.
So we, we put a lot of miles on our rigs because of the run volumes that we pull. So like I believe the 2013s right now are sitting at about 170,000 miles. So they, they get a lot of wear and tear and we just got to stay on top of it so we can keep responding, like I said.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item G seven, consider reappointments to the historic district commission.
Madam Supervisor, I enthusiastically move to approve the appointments of Catherine or Kathy Martin and David Curtis, Dave Curtis, to the Canton Historic District Commission for three-year terms effective through April 30th of 2025.
Deport. Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Treasurer Foster.
Don't you want to be a treasurer?
Sorry, Diane.
Diane, you guys are going to switch. Oh my gosh. I used to say Treasurer Slavens, trustee Foster. Okay, thank you. Two historic district commission terms have expired. Catherine Martin and Davis Curtis are both very valuable and very skilled members of the HDC and both are interested in reappointment. We just held the interviews the other day and they are both very good. Does, does anyone have any questions or comments on, at all? Summer?
I can go. So trustee Berninski, Supervisor Graham Hudak and I interviewed Kathy Martin and David Curtis, and I think they would be great to reappoint to the HDC. You know, they have served well and they have a lot of good ideas moving into the future.
And I would just say that I am also enthusiastically supporting them for this. They have a wealth of knowledge and are important assets to the commission.
Paul, I think you, did you raise your hand?
Yeah, I can't add anything else, you know, more of value than my two colleagues just said, just, you know, I've worked with both of them. I'm, they're doing amazing work with the HDC. You know, it's like a unique subset of individuals who kind of have the, the interest and the skillset that can really work on this, on this commissioning committee and do well. And both of them bring so much to it. So I made the motion and I meant the motion when I made it. So yeah, just excited about, I'm glad you're bringing forward both of these individuals for reappointment.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. And please watch your focus, everybody. There's, there's more coming up this year. So if people want to apply for some of the commissions. The next item on the agenda is G eight, consider first reading of the repeal and replacement of chapter 22, article three, division two of the Canton Code of Ordinances entitled Tax Exemption for Lincolnshire Apartments.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to introduce and hold the first reading of repeal and replacement of chapter 22, article three, division two, tax exemption for Lincolnshire Apartments and schedule a second reading for May 10, 2022.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Thank you. Consider first reading of repeal and replacement. Lincolnshire Village Apartments on Joy Road participates in the state of Michigan's low-income housing tax credit program. As such, they are eligible to pay a service charge to Canton Township in lieu of taxes. The service charge or payment in lieu of taxes pilot was originally established by the township ordinance. Due to a recent change in ownership of the complex, a repeal and replacement to the ordinance is required. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Nope. All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Next item, G nine, consider modifications of polling locations.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the new polling location of Holstein Elementary and backup location of Metital Airport.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. After the initial approval of voting precincts and polling locations on March 29, 2022, was brought to the clerk's attention that Life Church is no longer wishing to participate as a polling location. Clerk Seagres reexamined the maps and precincts to find a new polling location that was most beneficial for the affected precincts. Holstein Elementary will provide an efficient polling location with Metital Airport serving as a backup location. Clerk Seagres, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, just, you know, we were disappointed when we reconnected with our locations and jurisdictions and went out to kind of meet with everybody to get ready for the 2022 election. Life Church indicated they were not interested in serving as a polling location. We had already told the Bureau of Elections that the individuals would be, we already notified them of the update that the board approved at the last board meeting. So we wanted to race this one in. Luckily, we got it in, did a site visit. Holstein is a, is a great school. It's a great voting location. It has been the location for half of these voters already. So they will not see a change to their polling location. So that's actually almost like serendipity, kind of what we intervened there. And then Metital Airport has got a really cool aviation association hangar that could potentially be a polling location in the future. So I just wanted to just bring that to you all now. It's been a voting location in the past. We closed it because there was only one, one precinct there. But upon examination, we could, one, we could add additional precincts there. And then two, you would get to vote kind of around airplanes, which would be really cool. So I wanted to bring that forward.
Any comments or questions from the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Great, thank you. Item G 10, consider closing Public Safety's Records Bureau services to the public from May 11th to the 17th, 2022 for relocation purposes.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve closing Public Safety's Record Bureau to the public from May 11th to May 17, 2022 for relocation purposes.
Deport. Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Trustee Berninski. Public Safety's Records Bureau is being temporarily physically relocated to the second floor of the building to accommodate the physical relocation of furniture, files, equipment, phones, and computers. The bureau will need to be closed to the public on four normal business days, May 11th, 12th, 16th, and 17th, 2022. The bureau will reopen to the public on May 18th, 2022. Chief Chad, do you want to say anything?
No, the, the goal here is for it to coincide and be quickly done in anticipation of the renovation of that area and the public notification. The way, the way the focus goes out, we want to be able to get it in front of the board for your review.
Comments or questions? All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Add on G 11, consider a request to approve conceptual designs for the Village Arts Factory, Village Square Concept, and parking improvements in Cherry Hill Village. Getting feedback.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order entry to Partners in Architecture, PLC, in an amount not to exceed $65,400 for the Village Arts Factory, Village Square Concept, and parking improvements in Cherry Hill Village, and to approve the attached budget amendment for conceptual designs for the Village Arts Factory, Village Square Concept, and parking improvements in Cherry Hill Village.
Deport. Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Trustee Berninski. The conceptual designs for the Village Arts Factory, Village Square Concept, and improvements to parking in Cherry Hill Village is a preliminary step before moving forward with more comprehensive improvements to the village. The conceptual design phase will be performed by Partners in Architecture, PLC, which has an existing contact for services with the township. The conceptual design phase will include, one, walkthrough and evaluation of existing businesses and sites in the village; two, field measuring of existing buildings for purposes of creating CAD background drawings; three, creation of a site plan drawing from existing surveys provided by the township; four, review of zoning ordinances and outlining site requirements; five, developments of multiple site plan diagrams; six, development of multiple floor plan diagrams; seven, structural engineering assessment of the Village Arts Factory and corrective recommendations; eight, preliminary mechanical and electrical engineering diagramming; nine, consideration of sustainability strategies; ten, preliminary planning meeting with the township planning and zoning departments; eleven, refinement of selected site and floor plans incorporating input from the township; twelve, creation of computer-generated 3D images; thirteen, creation of conceptual opinion of construction costs; fourteen, creation of project schedule, and fifteen, review meetings as needed. Anybody want to add anything? All right, any questions from the board? Comments? I know you've been reviewing and asking questions. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Next add-on item is G 12, consider a request to approve conceptual designs for the Factory Park, Ridge Road Park, and Fire Station Number Two Park.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order to Partners in Architecture, PLC, 65 Marketplace Street, Suite 200, Mount Clemens, Michigan, 48043, in an amount not to exceed $159,700 for the conceptual designs of the Factory Park, Ridge Road Park, and Fire Station Number Two Park, and to approve the following budget amendment for the conceptual designs for the Factory Park, Ridge Road Park, and Fire Station Number Two Park.
Deport. Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Trustee Berninski. To remain consistent with the Cherry Hill Village improvements, Leisure Services is recommending toward Partners in Architecture conceptual designs for the Factory Park, Ridge Road Park, and Fire Station Number Two Park on Warren as a preliminary step before moving forward with the enhancement and development of Canton's green space. Partners in Architecture currently has an existing contract for services with the township. The conceptual design will include initial kickoff meeting with the township to clearly identify the overall project goals, objectives, and vision for the desired park projects. Site visit, site visit and evaluation of the proposed park areas. Design and programming session with the Challenge Course Designer, member of the Association for Challenge Course Technology for the Village Arts Factory Park. Development of a written site use program for each of the proposed park projects. Creation of site plan drawings from existing surveys to be provided by the township. Review of zoning ordinance and outlining site requirements for each location. Design and planning meetings with owner team. Development of multiple site plan diagrams for owner team review and comment. Identification and description of standalone park structures, warming hot pavilions, restrooms, et cetera. Preliminary planning meeting with the township planning and zoning departments. Refinement of selected site and plan diagrams incorporating owner team input. Creation of conceptual opinion of construction costs. Creation of an overall project schedule and potential phasing. Review meeting with owner team as needed. Owner team review and approval of this phase. Ridge Road Park also includes a further design development phase as outlined in the attached letter from Partners in Architecture. Greg, do you have anything to add?
No, happy to answer any questions.
Diane?
I have a quick question, Greg. What is challenge course design, what, design and program session with challenge course designer? What, what is that?
Right. If you actually, Supervisor, if you allow me to share screen, I can actually show you the initial conceptual design that's on the partnership website for. What the conceptual design looks like. It's more of an elevated boardwalk than a, a challenge course. I think the designer in his scope got a little aggressive with his tone of calling it a challenge course. We could go as far as getting into a more aggressive challenge course, but the initial thoughts are for an elevated boardwalk with the, the intent. This area is a wetland area and flood plain. So if we wanted to actually develop traditional trails and those sorts of things on the ground, you would have to take into account that it's in a flood plain and mitigate wetland issues and a lot of other construction issues that would come into play. So by elevating a boardwalk, we can avoid a lot of those issues. So as you can see, it's more of just a, an elevated pathway along here. And the intent, like over in this area, is an accessible play area that would be elevated. So the intent is to make this accessible for everyone as well. So it's not a, a challenge course per se, like a ropes obstacle course type thing.
Anyone else? Tanya?
So this is mostly going to be like a passive park? It's just.
Yes, yes. So it would be, really be a very unique opportunity to kind of be above nature and walk around through the park and observe nature from a, a unique perspective.
I just had a comment that we are working to build more parks on the north side of Ford Road. And it is, because I, I personally think that the north and northeast side of Ford Road is, is the northern side of Canton, has some park scarcity. And we are working on building some more pocket parks. And I'm very excited about the Ridge Road Park. At the same time, I'm hoping we will work in future to build more parks. Because right now, the only park that we have on the north side is the Copper Nick Park, Copper Park. So hopefully, we will have more parks on the north side of Canton.
I think the Fire Station Park is, that'll be up on Warren and Hagerty. But, and I don't think you have a concept for that yet, like you did for this one, correct?
That's correct, yeah. There's no initial design for that, so that would be developed with this process.
But yeah, definitely, we need more pocket parks up there. Michael?
Yeah, I would just want to echo that sentiment from trustee Ganguly. In a lot of ways, because of how the township developed, right? The first neighborhood coming in at the northwest corner and then slowly kind of filling in everything east of Canton Center. And then south of Ford Road developing last. And then now, as we've seen in our recent meetings with regard to some specific rezonings and some of the hot button issues around that, the last bit of the township to fill in is that western portion. And so our parks, you know, the township got really big into investing into parks when the population began to expand. And so clearly, you pick up land that is very cheap, very easy for most parks. That's why Heinz Park is in a, is in a green belt or is in like a drainage basin area. I was just in Austin, Texas. Almost every one of their parks is on unusable land that never got developed, right? And so building parks in the south and the southwest part of the township is super easy because for, for, for the last five decades, there's been an abundance of land. It has been more challenging to do it in the areas of the township where it's more dense. And I think that we have to be very intentional about that because clearly, we want to close those gaps in those areas where you have a lot of people and you have a long walk to a park. And it is super cool that just before the pandemic, we opened up Copper Park in an area and that, that was kind of spearheaded by, by, by citizens too, kind of asking for a park. And then knowing that our Fire Station Number Two Park is going to be in an area that, that is, it's like one of our areas of the township where we have like a, a high number of, of like Title I students, individuals who are from like lower socioeconomic backgrounds. So there, there's a need for community resources in those areas. And so it's kind of cool that the last park we built is there and then the next park we're going to build is in that area. And I think we just have to be intentional about continuing to do that.
Any comments, questions? Yep, our goal is to have a park within 10 minutes of everybody at their front door. Great, so all those in favor of the motion on the table say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Okay, great. Now we move on to public comment. I'm going to start with attendees online and I'll put up our clock like we did last time. time. This helps people. So comments are three minutes. They'll just be comments. We want to hear what you have to say. We'll take the questions, and we will, can, we can answer you via email, or give us a call later, or speak to staff afterwards, but this is a time for you to speak to us, and we give you three minutes, and I'm going to look at the attendees. I have to share the clock first. Share. Okay, I'm looking online. Let's see. Anyone online? Let's see, how do I, you know what, I have to stop share, excuse me, so I can look at those online. Any attendees online? I don't see any attendees online, nothing online, okay. We'll move back to sharing this. Okay, so please give us your name and where you live, and go ahead, do you want to come up to the podium?
My name is Christine Wofford. I live on Applewood in Canton, Michigan. I have a few comments. I'm a little passionate about the intersection of Cherry Hill and Sheldon. In fact, there used to be some old Michigan rotten, rusted signs that were posted there for, in the ground for like 30 years, and it took me a year to try to get someone to remove those. But I want someone to take a look at the southeast and southwest corner of Sheldon and Cherry Hill. It is just a mess. There's debris all over, the ditches are full of junk, so I'd like to see who is responsible for cleaning and trimming up that area, the southeast, southwest corners of Sheldon and Cherry Hill. My other question is, who pays for the demolition of the existing buildings where the car washes are going to be placed? What happens to the old non-existent, the old retired fire engine trucks? And what is the salary of Kathy Martin and David Curtis? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Okay. Please state your name and your question. Thank you. Go ahead.
So it's Daniel Coslin, 328 North Hagerty Road. Last month, I celebrated my 40th year there, so I've seen quite a few things in the community over the course of the years. A couple of things tonight. I, I'd like to, first of all, thank the, the new trustee board, because I think you have really helped us as a community the last few years here, since you've taken on. I, I love the Zoom. I love the technology. I would ask that maybe we could link the Zoom meetings on the website, so people could find them easier, to take us to the YouTube. That would be a, kind of helpful. My biggest portion here tonight is, I've always been an advocate of free speech, open speech in meetings, and what I heard at the last planning commission meeting, or the meeting before the last, I think it was the March meeting, was, we're trying to introduce a, a section in there for public comment. Two of the commissioners were very adamant at that discussion, and I think the, I think the concept of what they were saying was improper. You know, there was, there was conversation about how people should not be able to have this public comment, that this would be a waste of time. They potentially could have three minutes additionally for people who could take another hour of the planning commission's meeting for, really just to, some said to vent, two, two commissioners, you know, to, to vent, to, to complain. And I, and I sat back and I thought to myself, that's just not correct. That's not correct at all, because I see how you, you guys have brought this to a very open and transparent format, and I really thank you for that, because free speech in this community for a long time was stifled, and it really was hard to get up to this podium and, and be heard. And, you know, you have brought a whole different concept to that, and I thank you, every one of you, for that, because there's always, like it says right here, "A welcoming community where influence and policy direction make you have a feel of sense and belonging." It says it all, but we can't revert back to, oh, we don't want to hear them. That just sets out a bad vibe. I would ask those two commissioners to resign, because it sets a bad stage. I would ask that these boards be term limited to 24 months, so new people could come in and experience the board, and get new thoughts and new thought patterns, and I think that would be a refreshing thing. But again, that's, I'm going to use my time up here, and again, I thank you for your direction, and for the first time in a long time, I, I am very proud to be a member of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Comments? Questions? Okay, great. So now we move to staff comments. Does the staff want to comment on anything? Nope. Deputy Supervisor? Nope. Okay, let's go on to board comments.
No comment.
No comment? No comment? Okay. Board comments. Down here, Trustee Ganguly.
Yeah, it's, it's, sorry, it's good to be back after a month to the Township Board meeting, because I had COVID three weeks ago, and I tested negative last week, and I heard that we got a lot of comments about last week's, last board meeting, and I was really appreciative that the board took a right direction in, in considering all the citizens' comments. I also wanted to emphasize that next month, since April is coming to an end, next month is Asian American Heritage Month, and I think we are planning to interview some of the local citizens and local Asian community members on our cable channel to, you know, talk about what Asian American Heritage Month means to the community, because we have a considerable amount of Asian American population in this community. So that's what I wanted to bring up.
Thank you. Trustee Foster?
I just want to take a second to address something that was brought up in a couple of the public comments. We have tried very hard as a board to bring more people to our boards and commissions, and we've done that through the interview process. We never used to have an interview committee for the boards and commissions, and I'm very proud that we instituted that, and so for the last couple of years, three trustees have interviewed all of the people that are being appointed to our boards and commissions, and we're doing so in a, an attempt to bring more voices, more people to the, that are interested in these things in the community, to give them some buy-in into how we, you know, do things in the township. So, you know, we are trying. We are trying to do the balance between experience and bringing in new voices, and we have, you know, brought in a lot of new voices in the last couple of years, so I'm particularly proud of that. On our boards and commissions, those folks are volunteers, and, you know, they, they sign up, they show up month after month to participate, and I'm happy for everyone that does so, and I know in the focus this coming month, we're going to be advertising new openings coming up, so please apply.
Clerk Seegras?
I, one question that was asked was, that I at least know the answer for, was what's the salary of the historic district commissioners, and that is zero dollars. Unfortunately, they do lose out on a lot of their spare time, so that actually ends up costing them more. But yeah, so just a volunteer committee. The other questions were a little bit above my pay grade, so I don't know the answers to those. But the clerk's office, we're chugging along, we're looking at starting passports here next week. My deputy clerk has taken a position as the clerk in Ferndale, so I want to congratulate Anthony on his new position in Ferndale as the clerk. He's now my, my clerk colleague, and I look forward to seeing him at our, so, at our conference in a month and a half as a, as a fellow clerk and not a deputy. And I am currently receiving applications for deputy clerk, so that's exciting. We'll, we'll be filling that position here in the next couple of weeks. On top of that, I recently went to Houston, Texas, last Friday, and presented at the National Conference of Election Officials on election security, and that was a fantastic event, and it was a little bit, a little bit nervous, but I enjoyed doing that. And was notified the day before I left on Thursday that the Canton Township Clerk's Office was, one, an honorable mention from the U.S. Election Assistance Commission for accessibility in voting. So we, we, we got another national accolade, that's the second year in a row, so I'm super proud of the team. It's definitely a testament to Anthony's work, as well as my deputy, so, you know, but he's going to have to try to win an award now in Ferndale going forward. So, yeah, we're just kind of humming along in the, in the clerk's office, and, and we're having some fun. The, still waiting on the state of Michigan to update our redistricting that we've done with our, with our precincts, so that will be semi-challenging, trying to get all of that up and ready before we get the applications for absentee ballots out to folks, which would be coming in about a month from now. So in about a, you know, keep an eye out to the two of you in attendance, and anybody else watching virtually. Keep an eye out for new voter ID cards, because your, your precinct and/or your voting location will have changed. And on top of that, shortly after you receive your new voter ID card, you, if you're on the permanent absentee list, and half of the voters in Canton Township are, you will receive an application for an absentee ballot that will come towards the end of May. So that's coming, too. So we are, we're just having fun.
Congratulations on your speeches and your awards.
Speeches and awards.
Thank you. Trustee Berninski?
So I, too, want to thank Anthony. As a member of the Election Commission, I've worked with him a little bit and appreciated all of his hard work and service on behalf of the township, and I will miss him, and wishing him well in the future. Hope, I'm hoping that I'll get to see him before he leaves. And then just hoping that the weather gets a little bit warmer, and I don't have to wear my winter coat to the next board meeting.
I know our kids who had track meetings today didn't have fun. Yes, they were miserable, and the parents. Thank you. Treasurer Slavens?
Congratulations to Anthony and to your team for their award. Our office has been busy but calm. Just a reminder to folks, as they start to use their irrigation systems, they want to make sure that they monitor the water usage, because our summer months tend to increase the water bill, so quick reminder to folks on that. That's it.
Great, because we had 80 degrees on Sunday, and 20 today. Thank you. So yes, to, I can start, actually, a couple of questions, like we started here, so the HOA Know Your Neighbors was today, so your, a lot of your HOAs came out and asked a lot of questions of some, some legal minds out there, so make sure any of you who belong to HOAs that you contact your board and find out what they learned. We also had a good MDOT meeting today on Ford Road Boulevard, so people were able to come and look at the concepts and hear MDOT. We also recorded that, so that's going to be online if anybody wants to watch it. MDOT is also taking comments on the plan, so you can get on their website, there's a Ford, Ford MDOT site that will show the concepts, so you can submit questions and comments. They are listening to the public, which is great. Windy days. So we know we've had a lot of windy days, and you're going to see in the focus, the next focus is that we've, see trash blowing all over, since the snow has melted, and we have windy days like we did today and last week. So please get out and, you know, help your neighbors pick up the trash in front of your house. Businesses are being asked to pick up the trash also, so whoever's house it is, or whoever's business it is, they, they have the ultimate responsibility there. If it's township property, our, our team can get out and do that, but we know trash is, you know, being blown around, and as Summer said, you know, in the track meet today was very windy, so we know it's still going to continue, this, these are the days for that. So it's always a responsibility of all of us to try to make Canton a better place. Existing buildings. Patrick, can you comment on that? I forget, who is paying for the tear down of that building? Is it the new owner?
The demolition for both buildings, both at the car wash sites, the one at Michigan and Beck, and also the one on the east side of Hagerty, I believe those are both done by either the private owner or the applicants themselves.
Okay. All right, thank you. And old fire engine trucks and chief Stockline, you, we sell those, correct? It goes into a bank or something?
Well, actually, we'll hold on to a couple of these 2016 squads, just as backups, as well as the engines, they'll go into the reserves, and then our 2002, the really older, you know, engines, we'll sell those to the government auction site.
So they don't go out into the pasture, they all?
They don't go out, well, there's one thing at the pasture down there that was in the accident, so we're still trying to grab the title on that, so we can salvage that and get rid of that, but other than that, yeah, we, we, we bid them off at auction there.
Great, all right, thank you. Any other board questions or comments? All right, great. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Court. Motion made by Clerk Seegras, supported by Treasurer Slavens and Trustee Foster. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Good night, everybody. Have a great night.